Frank Barrett, White River Junction, Vermont. Application for variance from Section 22 with 387.1. City ordinance to permit residential units on the first floor in an MU zoning district at 54 Pleasant Street. Having a butters roll call, please.
Patrick and Ellen Dancero, American Legion Post #29.
Present.
City of Clermont, Gorman Holdings Incorporated, Vern and Janice Brighio, Robert Tatro.
Here.
SMR KONE LLC, and ML12072 LLC.
Here.
Your name, sir?
My name's Kevin LaCast.
Kevin.
I'm for the applicant.
Hey, don't fall asleep over there.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
You look like you're dozing on us.
No, I was just waiting, kind of patiently waiting. So we have, in this specific case, this is one of those situations where when the city-centered zoning was developed, there was a discussion about whether first-floor dwelling, street-level dwelling units would be allowed or not, just in the idea that the mixed-use district promoting mixed uses. What occurred was, as you can see on page two, under 22371, "A conditional use permit for residential uses may be granted for street-level dwelling units in the MU district except for properties fronting the following: Opera House Square, Tremont Street from Broad to Opera House Square, Pleasant from Opera House Square to Glidden, Sullivan Street from Opera House Square to Franklin Street, Main Street from Opera House Square to Franklin Street." So there's a clear sort of principal commercial street structure that they wanted to maintain, the drafters of this ordinance, to keep that commercial front. So those exceptions, this property is on one of those segments of streets where there's an exception. Now, technically, in my mind, this has ground-level residential. Also, technically, there is commercial facing Pleasant Street. So we're in this variance step here, just because there's a ground-level residential involved, where I think the drafters, when they conceived this, they thought there would be residential on the street face, if you see what I mean. You know, if you have a building that's 100 feet deep, that 100-foot depth of building would be all residential. That's what I think was imagined. In this case, 100-foot-deep building, round numbers, and I'm just using numbers, the front 40 to 50 feet are commercial, so it still maintains that commercial facade. That's the mechanics of what's going on, and that's the basis of how this variance came about and was required. Any questions?
So, I understand what you just said, when the MU and the city center, was the frontage being commercial was what they were, they typically didn't have, and I'm going to refer to this here, because I'm not going to assume, I think there's a dimension, because of the depth of this building being over 200 feet, that they weren't initially thinking that the use of that, because of that, correct? This is an exceptional building to the majority of the buildings when they looked at, because not all the buildings that are in question are of the depth.
That's a fair point, yeah.
I want, that was what you were trying to get to, correct? Do I understand that?
Well, no, I think that's a good observation. What I was getting to is the mechanics of what was imagined, and I think you're right, with the smaller buildings, you can only have one use on that ground floor. In this larger building, and because it's a larger building, you can have more than one use on that ground floor. That's what the applicants seek.
Any questions, Mike?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Who's the luckily, lucky candidate to start the ball rolling?
Good evening. Frank J. Barrett, Jr. I'm the architect for the project. Give you a very quick overview, and I'll be quick, because the evening's getting late. Kevin LaCast, who introduced himself, has an option on the property. The property, as you know, has been condemned, and for very good reasons. Once I walked through it, I understood that. We have several, on several occasions, completely walked through the property, noted that overall the structure of the building is very good. Building was built in 1926. It's masonry, load-bearing, steel-framed. Structurally, it's good. The electrical, mechanical systems, plumbing systems, roofing systems are completely shot, completely shot. And what Kevin is desiring to do is to completely gut the building, and when he says "gut it", it means not just putting a coat of paint on things and patching things inside, but literally gutting the building to the steel frame and the basic floor platforms, reinforce things as necessary, and then put residential use back into it. The building has always had, on the second and third floor, residential uses, as far as we know. It's sort of a real hodgepodge in layout, but nonetheless, to reconfigure the second and third floors with new apartment units, and then on the first floor, to keep the two storefronts which face Pleasant Street. It's a historic building in a historic district. We're not proposing to make any changes at all to the front facade of the building. There is presently sort of an arcade, you might say, walkway through the building. We will maintain that to some, in some configuration, but definitely keeping it exactly as it is on the Pleasant Street face. So we'll have two, two small retail units, and then behind that, there'll be a community space for the residents of the building. There'll be a manager's office, and then as you get towards the back, where you start getting some exterior wall area where you can have window openings, and actually, the building gets really nice sunlight on the backside, to have six dwelling units with some outdoor spaces, clean the back of the building up, reprogram it so that there's a new entry coming in, and, you know, with some landscaping, et cetera. So this is a, this is a complete overhaul of the building, and the building is worth it. It's, it's going to take a lot of money. We're estimating this is over a $4 million project, but the building warrants it, and I think the spaces will lay out very well. In an effort to keep the initial fees down until we know for sure that we have a project, we haven't gone and precisely laid out every single unit. Basically, what I did on some old drawings that we were able to get is identified the structural column grid within the building, and then literally taking a piece of trace paper and, and some markers, did a quick overlay using a pattern of one family, one unit, excuse me, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and studio units, and so that would be the mix. And we, at this point, think that the building can easily accommodate a mix of 32 units. So that's sort of an overview. I think it's a very, it's a very exciting project. The building, you know, as I say, it warrants it. Kevin has a good track record with the property that he owns across the street, the old Latchis, Latches?
Latches.
Latches building, which is one of his, that he has some good local, strong management that oversees the building, and then he has other properties in Clermont as well. So what makes me feel good as an architect working with him is, number one, he understands what really needs to be done to the building to make it a successful building again, as opposed to just say, "Look, can we just sort of patch this up and fix this up and tinker it and whatever?" And then, second of all, the properties that he does have in Clermont have a really good track record, and clearly, he's someone who knows how to invest in property, maintain property, and properly lease it, so that it doesn't become a burden to the city. So that's sort of an overview.
Any questions for the general?
How many floors?
The letter I tried to put in is, just think of everything that you might want to know in that letter. I realize it's a lot to sort of paw through late in the evening, but nonetheless, little reading material for you.
Three floors, correct?
Yes.
Cellar being a form of self-storage?
Yeah, the cellar, right now, is, is just a rabbit worm's nest of old shelving and storage, you know, it's, so all of that is going to get cleaned out, and then, and there are old boilers down there that date from when the building was first built. There's going to be a major asbestos abatement program. So then, once the basement is cleaned out, obviously, a little bit of it will be used for mechanical systems. The building is going to be completely sprinkled, which, right now, it is not. That building went up, there's, there's a lot of combustible material in that building. And then, the remainder of the basement would be for tenant storage.
Is the plan to have a manager on site?
There'll be a manager's office on site. Kevin, maybe you can speak a little bit more, too.
Yeah, sure. Did you want me to adjust the voting?
Yeah.
Please.
Hi, thank you, and thanks for your time tonight. So just to back up a little bit, I know Jay explained quite a bit about it, but I learned about the building a few months ago, and my intention at first was to go in and just maybe do a quick renovation of it. I had heard the building had been condemned, and I went in and realized the good reason why it was condemned. There really was, you know, a ton of life-safety issues with it, you know, it's just basically a mess. So when I looked at it, I said, "Well, if I'm going to do this, I'm going to do it right." So I'm going to invest, you know, four to five million dollars in this building, completely gut it out down to the studs, but if I'm going to do that, there was a couple of things that we had to do, which was be able to make enough units so it would be, you know, worthwhile for the investment in order to support the thing. And that's what brings us to having the residential on the first floor. So to answer your question, yeah, there'll be an onsite manager. There'll be, you know, we own and manage over 100 units in Clermont. Our total portfolio is about 600 units. We've got 100 units up in Berlin. We've got apartments in Franklin, Rochester, so we're kind of all over the state. But yeah, onsite, there would be onsite management.
Living or office hours?
Not quite sure. Haven't figured out those full details yet. Most likely, living onsite, but if not, it would certainly be office hours.
How many units? I know there's, what, 26 in there now?
There's 26 in there now.
They chopped and botched and...
Yeah, the layouts...
It's really, it's really a mess to look at, and I don't know, for people who haven't been in the building, and to see the condition of the building.
Wasn't there a restaurant in there?
I think originally, the building was a Newberry's or Woolworth's or something to that idea, and at some point in time, it became a mall, for say, where McGee's got put in.
That's where McGee's, yeah.
There, there was a line on this side and a line on this side that was retail.
Yeah.
But the upstairs stuff, over the course of time, to reiterate what they're saying, I think one of the biggest things was, if there was a fire, you couldn't get out just because it was a maze to get in and out.
Yeah.
So we're actually going to increase our number of units, roughly eight units, and three of those eight are going to be on the ground floor.
Six.
First floor will be six. Six on the first floor, yeah.
It's only six units total they're adding.
So, from what I understand, is that the building was renovated in probably the early 80s into apartments on the top two floors? And really, since then, nothing has been done to maintain the building, so it's just really deteriorated ever since those apartments were put in. And, yeah, I mean, as far as dead-end hallways, it really would be a death trap. If that place caught on fire, people would have died. It was, it was that critical. So that's what, you know, requires to have a complete gut and redo of it, so it's, you know, there's proper egress, proper life safety, such as sprinkles, so forth. And on the first floor, there'd be accessible units, so, you know, won't have to worry about stairs and elevators if there's elder or other handicap-accessible issues. So that's another reason to have it on the first floor. The other thing is, is that interior commercial space that, you know, once was used and may have flourished, has sat vacant, and is just really not a demand for that type of space. So really, with having all of that empty commercial space on that first floor, it's really an attraction for, you know, illegal activities, or people kind of just going in there and squatting, and, you know, really just making a mess of the place. So, you know, the use of having that, you know, all being commercial space on that first floor has really ran its course. With that being said, I do understand with keeping the facade on Pleasant Street and keeping a commercial presence on Pleasant Street, so we are proposing that the Pleasant Street side, although we're going to fix the facade and make it nice again, we wouldn't be replacing it and making that residential. That'll still, so when you walk up Pleasant Street, it'll still feel like you're walking up where it'll be commercial storefronts all the way down.
Will you have an entrance for the apartments on Pleasant Street?
There is presently an entrance. As you face the building, there's the main entrance that goes to the storefronts and then runs through the building.
There's a side.
And then there's a door to the, to the right, which I think is, was original to that storefront, which goes up some stairs, so that will remain.
So, still pretty inconspicuous, though, when we're talking about keeping a commercial front?
Yeah, and then, you know, a nice back entrance for the residents as well, with a new fire-rated stair in the back as well, so that, you know, we have two proper means of egress out of the building, et cetera.
This is a curiosity question, just because I don't know.
Sure.
In a development of this size, with all the ADA compliance, do you have to put an elevator in or no?
It's ba, well, Jay might be able to answer this a little bit.
It's based on a percentage of units, and so being able to satisfy that percentage, and the percentage varies according to the number of units within the ADA guidelines, but with the six units that we're presently proposing for the first floor, we'll be able to take care of the accessibility issues, so we will not need to have an elevator for the second and third floors.
Could you visualize, maybe, what might be in those commercial locations to enhance the residential?
I don't, to be honest with you. You know, my business is more real estate and providing space available for rent. As far as who comes in, you know, I'm not sure. I mean, obviously, we're going to be trying to seek out the best potential commercial residential, I mean, commercial tenant that we can find for the space, but I really don't have any set plans as of right now as to who would occupy it.
See a nice coffee shop in maybe one of the spaces?
Well, I, my thought process is that we have some pretty nice coffee shops, and maybe they would be interested with a captivated audience in facilitating occupying that commercial front. So that's, I just wanted to put...
Or some very small specialty retail, you know, like, you know, it's, the spaces will be big enough where, you know, someone can make some good use out of them, but still small enough where, you know, I think it would appeal to, again, a coffee shop, you know, maybe someone selling organic foods, you know, something small-scale specialty like that.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep.
Will any of this be Section 8?
Section 8?
Subsidized.
Subsidized housing?
So the funding stack that we're looking at will be a portion of private financing, a portion of it will be through New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, through their low-income housing tax credit program, and a portion would come in through community development block grants. As far as Section 8, Section 8 is administered to the residents themselves. It wouldn't be administered to the property itself. So what we are looking to do is an affordable housing project. Is that Section 8? No, it's not Section 8. It just means that people can make up to a certain amount of money and still qualify to live there. So it would be affordable for a teacher, someone that works in a municipality, you know, other people. So for example, a family of three could make up to like $33,000 and still be allowed to live, you know, it's still income-qualified to be in the property. But now, the hook with that type of financing is the oversight and management required on a property. So, you know, given the way, the condition that the property was in now, and has been in the past, and other properties throughout the community, you know, there are people that wouldn't qualify for other reasons other than income, like, because we still have a screening process. So if someone doesn't, you know, meet our standards for, for, you know, for our screening process, our tenant selection plan, they wouldn't be allowed into the property. So there's a lot of management that goes along with the property, so, you know, like right now, there's people that were living in that property that wouldn't qualify to live in this property, just simply because they've been evicted, or they've caused trouble, or they've been convicted of a crime. All those reasons would allow, would make them prohibited from renting the property. I know it's kind of a roundabout answer, but I'm not sure if I answered your question or not.
Walking through the property on two occasions in May and early June, we were discussing that some of the people were living in that premises. It was condemned for a very good reason.
The unit, when this is done, you're putting in $5 million. The city's going to assumably get their full benefit of tax revenue? We're not looking for a tax rate?
I know it's getting late, but we have a zoning question about ground-floor residential, not financing structure.
Overall, the thing, though, Mike, from history of programs, just, it's a question of, of knowledge to know. You know, if you add more...
The benefits outweigh any of the negatives. Could this be a benefit for the city?
Right, but if we were, if we were just looking at residential on the ground floor, if he was just putting duct tape on the front window and putting residential in the front, on the ground floor, I don't think we'd have this level of discussion about the financing of the project.
Right, I agree.
We, we're talking about specific use and a request for use.
I think tax base makes more sense. I do agree with this question, though.
I disagree.
Okay, I have a question. Is this a TIP district?
No.
No.
It is not.
No, no. MU?
It's mixed-use, well, she's talking about tax increment financing.
I know she's talking about, but it's not, it's only in MU, it's not in the TIP.
There, there are certain overlay districts, this is not in the TIP.
This isn't the TIP, okay.
But yeah, so we really want to focus on, and considering the hour, we want to focus on the application for a variance.
That's all night.
Well, I'm happy for you, I'm not.
Yeah.
But I think that's a good question, though.
I mean, we've asked that question before of applicants, so I don't think it's out of...
It's a valid question, you know.
I think so, too.
Are we allowing for something to change, and don't take this the wrong way, but for allowing to change, you're also going to get X amount at a tax rate instead of what the guy across the street, which he happens to own, would be paying?
Right.
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the type of question you're asking would be very difficult for anyone in this room to answer. This question would be best posed to our assessor, Marlene Jordan. In my experience doing development projects, and I'll use one anecdote, I did a $45 million mill reconversion. So the company that rehabilitated this mill project put $45 million of investment into it. The city valued it at $12 million. The owner, as their right, could have put in an abatement to ask for the valuation to be even lower. Other projects, in my experience, had that happen. So again, it's, it's more of an assessing type of question. It's really hard to say. He would put $5 million into the property, and it would be a property that has $5 million worth of material in it, but any number of things could affect an assessor's evaluation of value of the property going forward. Or the owner's ability to dispute that assessor's valuation and request an abatement, not necessarily that an abatement would be upheld at the state-level board that determines whether abatement requests get supported or not.
I'm not really sure, like, I don't think our question was about assessments. I think our question is...
Well, the, well...
Okay, never mind. Forget it, whatever.
Ostensibly, the city will get greater tax base from this property, considering what it is, what its assessment is currently.
I guess what my question was is, with a project of this sort, where you do things throughout the state, not knowing the answer to this question, is it like a church where you're going to put all this development, all this money into it, now you go to the city, you go to the state? Well, good, we want, and we're going to use the word "abatement," but I don't know if that's the word I want to use, that we have some form of our criteria for housing, the income's this, we want to drop so our taxes, you know, the tax base on the building, is it going to be somewhat appropriate to the building, I guess, is what I was getting at? You know, is the value of your investment, as far as what you're doing, grant you is going to be higher than the set assessment of the building? I mean, that's a no-brainer. God bless you for putting $5 million in the middle of Clermont.
Thank you.
It's great to see something like that, but the, the balance of that, so what I was getting at was the building, is there something, not knowing how this all works, where because you do this, the ways your funds are acquired, that the tax rate, if they say that building, when it's all said and done, is only worth a million dollars, and with what you've done with the subsidies that are coming into it, good, we're only going to do a $250,000 assessment? Which, the question, I guess, was, is there any proposal to, or not proposal, is there any means of relation to what the value of the assessment is versus your tax? You're going to be paying full tax bill on an assessed value.
Will you be pursuing any kind of tax credits or et cetera?
Not through the city.
Hopefully. That's all they're going to ask.
That's a simple, that's a simple end of a long question.
If, if all six units on the bottom and the other units above are filled to capacity, do you have enough off-street parking?
That's one of the things that...
That's part two.
Part two.
Oh, part two, oh.
Have we discussed part two yet or no?
No.
Okay, good.
We gotta get past part one.
I'll save that question for later.
Okay, thanks.
Sometimes we combine them.
No, we gotta do them separate. Jane's not here to direct this thing. We gotta do them separately.
I'm trying, but you're not listening.
The six units on the bottom.
So that the thing is, is to allow six units on the ground floor?
Right. Now it's all commercial.
Into the, into it, which is...
Mixed use.
And this is a variance, correct?
Yeah.
It is.
So we have to check out all our reasons.
So, is there anybody else to speak in favor of this application on this level? Gentlemen in the blue shirt, please.
Oh, blue shirt?
It was blue when I started. I'm Robert Tatro. I own, with my son, 66 Pleasant Street, so I'm an immediate butter to Kevin. I was also on the city center conference steering committee, thank you. That took up this issue of residences on the first floor. There were 12 of us on that committee. Almost all of us showed up at every meeting, and two of us were in favor of residences on the first floor. Everybody else was not. I'm speaking in favor of residents on the first floor tonight, especially with the frontage on Pleasant Street being kept commercial. And Jay is absolutely right, the back of that building is a mess, and I've seen some schematics about what they're going to do with it. It's only going to enhance the area, and it's also going to be, it's also going to allow other buildings on that street, other, other owners to do similar-type projects, which is only going to enhance all the businesses. As Carolyn mentioned, the patronage would just be increased. That's all I have.
As far, I just, when the steering committee, the people who, who didn't want it...
Did not?
Did not want residential.
Well, but two of us.
Everybody did but two? Or the only two of you did?
Only two did.
So the ones who did not, and one simple, did anybody take the concept of...
No.
Thank you.
I don't remember at all discussing big, long buildings using the front for commercial... -big, long buildings using the front for commercial and the back.
I can't even say you need to use words.
Well, he knew what I, he knew exactly what I meant.
But for defor.
We were mainly discussing the, the frontage on Pleasant Street and some of the other commercial districts, as to how it would be difficult to manage a resident.
So, we, as a steering committee, they looked at the whole thing, not saying, well, good, we got three buildings, one being your building, one being the building in question, that is an exception to every other building on the street. Because I don't, I don't believe there is another building on the street.
My building's almost as long.
Well, I went by the dimension on your building. I went by the dimension on your building at two hundred plus feet, two hundred and five.
Kevin's. I think mine's like one fifty-something, one sixty.
So, does that mean you're gonna come in for a variance?
No, I've got the gym in there now, and they're perfectly happy.
According to, according to this here, you're, to the First Congregational Church, your boundary to their side is two hundred and five point three four feet.
That may be the boundary line, but the building doesn't-
No, that's the building. That's, that's what this plan in front of us says.
Okay, I didn't know, Mike.
Assuming the plan's gonna move on. So, anyway, my question was, was the depth. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, please.
My name's Gary Trotier. Um, I'm from Ward Two, live in Claremont. Um, I also own a building on Pleasant Street, and it's the Union Block, which is on the corner of Tremont Square. Um, and I have residential tenants, and, uh, I also am the president of the Heart of Claremont, which is concerned about historic district and its development. And, um, I have been in Claremont, uh, for over forty years, so I've seen, um, you know, all this development that has been trying to drive people away from this historic city center. And, and the only way I feel like we're gonna be able to, um, gain value in the city center is to gain population. I think we really need to fill the, all these apartments need people. And, uh, and that's gonna bring, uh, you know, a walkable downtown, a residential downtown. It's very, very important. I'm very excited about this venture. I, I really hope that it's approved. Um, Dr. Tatro and I were both on the city setting, uh, city center steering committee, and I thoroughly remember this conversation, uh, like it was yesterday, and Bob and I argued the same thing, which was, uh, we don't know how these buildings are gonna be repurposed. We just know that they have to be repurposed. We also know that the, um, that the, um, commercial sections, uh, the first floor, have failed miserably in the last forty years, uh, and they need to be repurposed. And, and, and we can't stand or sit here and say, "I want this to happen in that building, just because I think it's a good idea." What's gonna happen in that building is gonna happen because there's some sort of, it, it's gonna be a response to some sort of need. And, uh, so, I'm thoroughly in favor of it. So, I remember the steering committee, this, this was why, uh, Bob and I kind of lost the argument. They said, picture this, low-income housing taking over the first floor, and people hanging sheets in the windows, because they can't afford curtains. And so, now you're downtown, you know, it looks absolutely horrible. And, uh, you know, the answer was, that doesn't have to happen, and of course, we could control that and so forth. Uh, but how, but, you know, sometimes an image gets a life of its own, and that's what happened to our committee. And, uh, we, uh, we thoroughly said, you know, uh, there's ways to control that. So, so, the, the building needs to be repurposed in the correct way, needs to bring people in the downtown, and, and also, um, this is gonna provide an impetus to bring more people, and I think it's also gonna do something. I've had a, a conversation with, uh, city manager, Mr. McNutt, about, um, how, you know, to handle your next topic, uh, which is the pressure that's gonna come into the parking. I think we have to rethink how we're gonna use the downtown, and I think we, the tide needs to turn. We need to bring people downtown. Um, and I have, I'll have a comment when it comes to parking, but that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen from the Legion, you're waiting for this one or the next one? Thank you, sir. Gentlemen in the back, either one of you? No, good. Um, is there any other questions for the applicant?
I can't believe so.
Mike, do you have anything else to add? No, good.
I encourage you to use the review criteria worksheet.
Got it. Wait a motion first.
I hear you, write paper in front of me first.
Uh, you want thirteen? That's fourteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew someone would find that number for me.
I got better eyesight.
Review the criteria. I can't.
Sure can.
What's that? I have a, uh, motion regarding our variance for this application regarding the, to add the six units.
I don't see. That would be the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll make a motion at the, um-
Go to last page.
The residential use of the MB zoning to permit street-level dwelling units, although I'd like to add, uh, six, at fifty-four Pleasant Street.
No.
No?
She showed you the wrong page. Go to last page. Page from here down.
Oh, small.
Just read this here.
All the way down.
Say six. Yeah, just say that, and then this is- You're just allowing the street level, you don't say six.
Right there.
Mm-hmm.
And then all those.
No, just the recommended portion.
Recommended only.
Yep, yep, and then you're good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the variance of the city zoning ordinance to permit dwelling units on street level at fifty-four Pleasant Street, tax map one-twenty, lot eighty-six. The owner shall abide by the information provided in the variance application for ZBA, case number Z zero-two-zero-one-seven-dash-zero-zero-one-three, and testimony during public hearing for said case. This variance shall be recorded as a chain of title.
So, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Under discussion for our variance, um, my biggest thing is the uniqueness of this building. It's not like we have an abundance of square-footage buildings that we're gonna address this. I think the, uh, comment that Mr. Trotier made is, we need to move forward, we need to, uh, fix a dying, a dying animal. We need, for lack of terms, I don't know what else you're on, you know, it's, we're, we're not, we're not increasing a burden on the city by any means at this point.
It definitely would not be-
It's a, it's a public interest thing, because we're gonna be bringing, A, tax dollars back, we're gonna be bringing affordable housing in, we're keeping the retail aspects in the building.
Yeah, I think the spirit of the ordinance is still being adhered to by having the frontage be commercial.
As far as the, you know, surrounding values, it has to help.
Something's gonna go up.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer, and, and for nobody that's been in the building, if you ever get a chance, it's a no-brainer that this is gonna increase.
And I think granting the variance would do substantial justice, because, um, we've got a condemned building right now that's going to, um, be rehabbed and to bring, um, life back to downtown.
Did you get all that, Mike? Did we hit 'em all? It's, that's your new job now, you gotta make sure we hit 'em all.
I think, that I agree with you that there's, yes.
Are the ordinance observed?
Yeah, I think, I do think that, like you said, that, um-
It's a reasonable-
The uniqueness is the building itself.
And I don't think it's going to maintain the value of the surrounding properties. I think it's actually going to increase it.
We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not gonna ask for Butter's roll call again, being that we got the same applicant. But, um, we have, there again, Frank Barrett, Way River Junction, Vermont, applicant for variance from section twenty-two, five-thirty-three, the city ordinance to modify a parking, uh, requirements, um, for fifty-four Pleasant Street. We have the Butter's roll call, which we've already gone over, so, Mike?
Let's go for this.
Please.
We have in this building a lot of residential units. Over time, what's happened is that there's been no attention really paid to parking, so there hasn't been any parking for these buildings, and I think some folks could speak to that a little bit better than I can. Um, for that reason, we do find that, um, in this context, for this scale of development for these apartments, um, there is some constraint for available parking. For thirty-two units, at a rate of one and a half parking spaces per unit, we're looking at forty-eight parking spaces. Now, um, the discussion and the application has been a request to reduce that down to one parking space per dwelling unit. The applicant has done some research, has some corroborating evidence for other communities. Um, for my part, I wanted to test whether or not it made sense to have one, uh, parking unit per dwelling. And, while this is not the end-all-be-all, um, I did take a census data for a block of the city center area, uh, basically a bunch of, I, around here, you can't really call them standard city blocks, but a bunch of areas that had a lot of, um, apartments in there of varying size and, and quality. And, um, I did a, did a analysis about the median, uh, parking demand or number of vehicles per dwelling unit of rental. So, there's a mix of ownership and rental units in that block. I picked out the rental units, I picked out the number of vehicles based on census data per unit, so there's a range of units with one vehicle, two vehicles, three, four, five. And, when I picked out what the median, um, is for the number of vehicles in this sort of downtown district that I looked at, it was about zero-point-six-four vehicles per dwelling unit. I then, with census, the wonderful thing that census is, they have sometimes a, a, a margin of error, so I added the margin, so I way overestimated the number of vehicles per dwelling unit, and that bumped it up to zero-point-seven vehicles per dwelling unit in the downtown area.
What year was the census information?
Uh, this is the American Community Survey from twenty-fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so that's, those are estimates, that's why they have the-
Yeah.
...margin of error. Um, so, when we look at that, we look at what the existing conditions are downtown. There is, there, that is what I did to test the theory that downtown apartments, for whatever reason, tend to have a lower parking demand than, say, suburban or countryside rental unit. And I wanted to see how much. I was a little surprised by that number. I didn't expect that low of, uh, rate, but it gives me comfort in saying that the one space per dwelling unit makes sense. Um, and, and it's, in this case, what we're looking at is, we're looking at a variance for the parking demand. Um, there is going to be some discussion, I anticipate, about where the parking's going to be, and the city is working with the applicant on the specific locations. It could be pi- private property, leased space, it could be some spaces in, um, a par, a public parking lot, because the city has leased parking spaces for private interests on public lots before, and will continue to do that in the future. Um, it could be a certain number of spaces on their own property. And, while we don't have that now, we are working towards that. And you'll notice in the staff memo that one of the conditions of approval is that the variance is granted upon the condition that those long-term parking spaces are developed and finalized.
Question for you. Do you have the general data? I know that we've talked about this in previous applications of the parking, um, utilization, kind of, um, information that was taken for city parking spots, and, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a pretty underutilized parking spaces here in the downtown area.
Mm-hmm.
Do you recall roughly how many spots that was?
There, there, there's no way to say-
I know, average, yeah.
Because, because it was taken from so many different areas, and some places have a high demand, some places don't.
Mm-hmm. So, obviously, I'm thinking downtown.
In this specific area, I think it was about forty to sixty percent utilized-
Okay.
-based on time of day. Now, that was done before new uses like the gym came in.
Okay.
So, highly localized usage might have spiked recently. But, we know of quite a few lots that are privately owned that are very often empty.
Okay, yeah.
So, we think there's plenty of opportunity-
Yeah.
-for a parking solution for this property. It's just shifting the parking demand from one-point-five to one is, is the application at this time.
I take it we would have to assume that, um, not everybody's gonna be working the same shift, so there'll be pairs in there, there'll be some people working second shift, third shift, so the odds of all the spaces being filled to begin with at any one given time, I would think would be the exception.
On weekends.
There, there are times, like when the Opera House has a popular show-
I'll talk about the residents of the, the building.
And, under the concept of shared parking, that nighttime, daytime use for the different work shifts, in a downtown, you rarely have a substantial amount of the workforce working the second or third shift.
So, we're not talking assigned parking, we're talking shared parking.
I'm talking, well, when we're talking about various shifts in parking, I'm thinking of a workday. And you've got a daytime shift, that's typically the commercial use in the downtown, and that's when the peak daytime demand is. And then that can be changed over to the evening use, which may be a residential or non-commercial, retail, restaurant use. Uh, so, there, there is some opportunity for shared parking mix as well, and we'll be looking at that. Um, we have a Butters here who have a concern about their interests in public parking spaces to maintain, um, some reasonable access to public parking. And, uh, I think we're, we're, we are sensitive to that concern, and I think the plans that we'll develop, not only for this specific case, but for other cases citywide, will be sensitive to, um, citywide, but also localized parking needs, nighttime, daytime, whatever it might be.
Is the city still gonna keep a parking ban for winter?
That's part of the mix of what we're looking at for how we improve upon the current parking.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, is, is, maybe the city manager can, are we, are we looking to possibly change the way our overnight parking in the wintertime works?
Yes, we are looking at that.
To allow the ability in, in, okay.
Yep.
Like Boston, there's, there's certain times in winter, good, you cannot park here this day.
Right.
Tomorrow, you cannot park here, the next day, you cannot park there, and that allows for public parking. And, and I guess that's, if the whole mix is, is trying to figure that, it's gonna benefit the whole, uh, downtown, not just this project, Mr. Trotier's property, possibly like the VFW, the Insurance Center, the Opera House, which the Opera House won't have overnight parking, but... Cool. Any other questions, Mike? Carolyn?
I don't have any questions. I, I have a comment. Um, I see this as a great opportunity for the zoning board to think of the future, shared parking. I mean, we're trying to, uh, fill our storefronts and all of the buildings that are downtown empty, and, and I think this is long overdue, so.
Yeah, hopefully the mushroom won't work. Hopefully, the mushroom won't work.
Well, it's like a store, if you see a bunch of cars sitting at the store, what do you do? You have a perception.
Right, buying, playing one of his.
I would also note that, just to bring it up again, we had a very similar case last month about, not necessarily this exact district, but downtown and parking, and I think it really should be brought up to our city council to look at these ordinances and make sure that these requirements make sense for the area still. If you're looking at census data that says the majority of the rental units in that area have less than one car, then why is the requirement a car and a half per? So I'm just saying, maybe it's something that can be brought to them to discuss. It's not my place to say whether it should be changed or not, but I think they should discuss it.
I don't think you want to direct that one to him, I think that'd be directed to the general.
Well, no, I have to let him know, so he can say that we're requesting it.
She has to go through proper channels.
Yes.
We're going to cut you right out of the picture tonight. We're going to, we're going to save you the time.
Can we go for more?
So, I'm sorry?
Nothing.
All right. So.
Do the vote, you know how to do it.
Who wants to be the lucky candidate to start?
Just, just a few comments. When, when we first proposed the, the number of one unit, one space per dwelling unit, that prompted me to sort of look at some of the zoning ordinances just a little bit north of here, Hanover, Lebanon, Hartford, and it's interesting, Hanover, and a lifetime ago, it seems, I was for almost seven years, was planning, zoning, and building code administrator in Hanover, and let me tell you, parking has been harshly fought over since the 1960s in that downtown area. And only a couple of years ago, well, maybe a little bit more than that, Hanover revised its parking ordinance to distinguish between multifamily dwelling units in some of the outer town locations versus dwelling units within the downtown, and admittedly, the downtown's pretty small. But what they did is developed a residential, a downtown residential parking requirement, and that is one, one space per dwelling unit. A little bit further out, it's one per, 1.5, you know, per dwelling unit, and then, you know, with single family and duplex, it's, it's two, two spaces per dwelling unit. So that distinction has been made. Lebanon, within downtown, West Lebanon and Lebanon, there's basically just a parking pool. It's all shared parking. White River, that has been the case since my office, since I've had my office in White River, which was starting in February 2003, with a, with a remarkable redevelopment that's occurring to that downtown, there is starting to be a parking problem, there was basically a parking pool, and, you know, but now with the successful revitalization and two new big buildings going up, Hartford's realizing it needs to take a look at exactly how it manages that, but, and drawing some distinctions between downtown residential uses and residential parking requirements in the more outlying areas. So I, I really don't have anything more to add to it than that. Maybe Kevin does as far as how he handles parking with his other properties in Claremont.
Sure, yeah, so I just wanted to add that, you know, from a real-life example, I can kind of reiterate what Mike was saying as far as the usage of parking. So when I became, came before the board for the Latches Building several years ago, the requirement was one and a half. I didn't have all that parking on site, I had other properties, like on Sullivan Street, Union Street, which had more than enough parking, so I had to do more or less a long-term lease with those properties to gain the excess parking that I needed. In all the years that I've owned the Latches Building, I have never had to use that additional parking, we have more than enough behind the building, so the one, you know, spot per unit that we have over there is, you know, more than adequate for it. So, you know, that's just another example of, you know, apartments that are downtown, just right across the street, that we own and manage where it's sufficient parking, so that's all I want to add.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Trotia? Let you go first this time.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think I want to tell you a little story, but I'll make it definitely under five minutes. I was a little hot under the collar when I, when I found out that the city might help Mr. LaCass find some parking, since for the past 40 years that I've owned Union Block, they answered to me, which Union Block has no surrounding property, it just sits on its lot, and that's about it, is that there is no parking for your building, and we are not going to do any parking, and we're not going to make parking available downtown to any residential people, because we don't want any residential people downtown. And we would like to depopulate the downtown, because we don't like the type of people we get down there, because they're a little bit too low-income. Meanwhile, when you get rid of all the parking, and you, and you, and you don't allow people that own cars to live in the downtown, then what do you think you're going to get for tenants? If, you know, they say, where am I going to park? Well, you have to get rid of your car if you'd like to live here. So I think for a long, long time, the strategy has been to depopulate the downtown, and it almost has ruined our downtown. And thank God, we've got some gorgeous architecture, and we have gorgeous downtown, so it can come back, but attitudes have to change. Anyway, so I went to see our city manager, because I said, if you help Kevin LaCass, you better be the first city manager that does something for the whole historic downtown, not just because we have one fantastic investor that has, you know, that's going to do a great job on one building, and he's going to get your attention, when we really have this whole area to worry, to worry about. So we had a little meeting, and, you know, I, I feel very, very good that we're going the right way, and I hope you guys feel the same way, that we're going the right direction, redevelop these buildings, repurpose them, get more people living in the downtown, bring value to these buildings. And, you know, we have, you know, talking with Mr. McNutt, I find he has got some incredible ideas, so if I have two minutes left, I'd like to seat them to Mr. McDuck, Mr. McNutt, and ask him if he, if you, Mr. Chairman would let him share some things with you people that he shared with me, that make me feel so strongly that I think we're going to solve this parking problem, and I don't think this building is going to cause us a problem, because it's going to change things.
Well, thank you for that. I, I believe in the comments that were made about bringing folks back into the downtown. When you have people, people demand things, and when they demand things, those things eventually come, because people see an opportunity to make money. So, and supporting the downtown with increased foot traffic has been successful in community after community after community. I've been successful with it in communities that I've worked in, and I know it can happen here. I've been, parking in many New England communities is a challenge, because these communities were designed before cars. But with, you know, really taking a, a good look at the situation, sitting down with property owners, looking at what's available, most communities have been successful in ironing these issues out, as Mr. Barrett talked about in Hanover. In my experience, I've been successful, just getting people into a room, getting past baggage and old grievances, and talking about what is possible. And once we start talking about what is possible, people start to open up and contribute their ideas for success as well. So I don't have all the answers right now, but I want to assure the zoning board that I'm committed to this, I'm committed to the revitalization of Pleasant Street, and I've already started to see some opportunities for additional parking in the downtown, that I, I don't believe parking will be our problem going forward. I think there's a lot of opportunities for additional parking in the downtown. So I, I'm heavily in support of one parking space per a residential unit in the downtown, not just for Kevin, but for each building that has the possibility of having mixed-use residential retail. I think for their residential units, one parking space will be sufficient, and my history and experience in, in housing development supports Mike McCrory's research as well.
Now, you as a city manager, and Mike McCrory, are we, and I hopefully, this is the avenue that we're heading towards, historically for us as a board, and I'm going to speak for the board, because I've been here for just about 30 years now. We can come up with a great plan such as this, we can present it to these people, is the city, you're saying, is, is the rest of the city on board with, with eliminating some of the problems we have with parking bans, making it accessible to these units to be able to bring this growth back?
Yes. We are in favor of if it, you know, and not every solution is applicable in every instance, but on some streets, doing alternate parking would be applicable and beneficial. In other instances, eventually putting second parking decks will become necessary, and that is possible. In existing parking garages that the city owns, we can make them available during storms and parking bans to allow people to park for those very limited instances. With proper enforcement, that has worked tremendously well in cities like Fitchburg and, and other places. I personally have lived in East Cambridge, which is an incredibly dense area, they do the alternate street parking during storms. Never had a problem, never had a problem. And there's very opinionated people that live where I live in Cambridge. So I, I believe all of these different things are, have been successful elsewhere, and they can be put in practice here in Claremont, and we won't see this as a challenge. When this first was brought to me, as Mr. Trotia was saying, there were property owners that we were concerned that they were going to come out in opposition to this, so I, I think it's been important, and it will continue to be important, to sit down with different property owners as individuals and say, we're here to support your parking challenges and concerns just as much as we're here to support Kevin. This isn't about Kevin, this is about the entire downtown.
Good, thank you.
I do know that we, as a, as a board, as a community, as whatever, revitalizing downtown is something that needs to happen. Everybody used to think Washington Street was going to expand all the way to Newport. We'll drive down Washington Street now. There's an awful lot of empty buildings down there that everybody thought were going to remain filled, we're going to keep growing. We have an opportunity to do some revitalization downtown, which we've been talking about for years. I would not like to think parking was going to stop it.
Good point, good point.
I just, Robert Tatro again. I too was dismayed when I first saw this application for variance, so much so that I immediately got in touch with Mike, who I'd never met before, through David Putnam, and they were astute enough and concerned enough to meet with me and Gary, and Mr. McNutt, and Nancy Merrill on Monday afternoon, and we hashed this out for over an hour, and I came away in agreeance with not only this variance, but in the long-term solutions, finding solutions for the parking problem. And I believe that the, the way you read that was that the long-term solution was part of the variance, part of the motion, and that makes it all very palatable.
Thank you.
I hear you. Take your time.
We got all night.
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, my name is George Lapin, and I am the commander of American Legion Post Number 29, which is on a Butter to the, the Goddard Block. And, yeah, we're, we're, we are encouraged also of the prospect of renewed development, development in, in Claremont. However, our group of membership is, we're an older group. I mean, our average, our average member is out of the Vietnam era and before. We're approximately 260 strong, but our concern is, is if the, the city starts designating areas for the different businesses and the different entities that border and use, use that parking lot. We've, the American Legion has always shared the use of the spark, the parking lots in that municipal parking area, and as good citizens and good neighbors, we accept this as, as part of, of being in that section of the community. But again, I come back to the age of our, the age of our individuals, we would hate to see along our property line, sections of parking area that, that all of a sudden we couldn't use, and our membership has to go further into the parking lot and make it more difficult for them. So we're just asking that the city consider the needs of all of the Butters, and especially those who have given their service to our country. So in closing here, I'll just say that American Legion Post 29 is asking that no parking spaces be assigned to any one entity, that's.
Carolyn?
You've been here all night, so I finally, I'm going to give you a question. When is the maximum amount of your parking used? What time of day?
Well, I would say from probably noon on, and then it all depends on what we have going on for events. If we have an evening event, a dance or something like that, then of course, we're going to need more of it, but we're just, we're just concerned about those spaces right along our, our borderline or our property line, and God bless whatever happens out in the rest of that parking lot.
In, in, Mike or, or the city manager, we're not actually designating municipal parking, so I think to answer your question, and please, one of you correct me if I'm wrong, the parking lot that is on the Insurance Center side of your building, the parking lot that's on the Goddard side, are not going to be deemed designated for apartment number one, apartment number two, they're going to, it's still going to be a first-come, first-served basis, the way it is now.
Okay, super. But again, we were just concerned, the way, the way we read the, the way we read the information that I gathered from talking with Mike here, is that I was under the impression, and the, and the Post was under the impression, that there would probably be areas designated, and we, we just would, would hate to see that.
Understandable.
That's understandable, that's, that's not the, the intent of what the direction they're trying to go.
Well, thank you very much for clarifying that, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just make a quick comment, the letter that the Post provided will not stop with this application, we'll, we'll keep that as advice, and we'll probably be in contact with the Post as, as things progress.
That'd be good, thank you. Gentlemen in back, okay? Anybody else speaking? Opposition, favor? Be none? We're going to call the public hearing.
If I have questions for him?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So you have questions?
I do.
From Ms. LaCass?
Yes.
Ms. LaCass, could you please come back to the spotlight?
Sorry. I just wanted a little bit of a clarification in reading through this, the remaining 17 spaces required to be a mix of public and private spaces located nearby and adjacent to the project. Can you specify more what you're hoping those will be, because that's just kind of vague for me?
We're still looking at that, so before we So before we came before this board, we did come before the city council and spoke to them too about their openness and willingness to work, you know, with the city as far as trying to figure out what, where the parking spaces are going to come from. So on the land that we own currently, you know, with the Goddard Block, there's room for about 15 spaces already. Where the remaining 17 spaces will come from is still going to be worked out, whether it's shared with the municipal lot, whether it's rented privately from somebody else.
Okay.
Those details haven't quite been figured out. We first just needed to come forth and figure out how many spaces we need, and that was a big process of going through and getting this variance.
Makes sense. And Mike, this is what you are alluding to in your recommendations?
That's right.
Okay.
That one condition, yeah.
Perfect, thank you very much.
So basically, all you're really looking for is an additional 17 spots, because you already have your own parking for the other ones.
Correct.
So we're not looking for 32 spaces here, we're really looking for 17.
That's right.
But we're looking to change from the 1.5 to one.
Right, right, exactly. Because otherwise we wouldn't need it.
That's the main thing, is the one, changing it from 1.5 to one. It's not so much where the parking's going to be, but to allow them to go to one space instead of one and a half space.
If we go to one, he, all he needs is 17 spots.
No, if we go to one, he's going to need 30 something, whereas if we do it by standard today, it's 48.
No, yes. He's going to need 32 spots, but he has 15, so he only needs 17.
Right, no, I know, I know what he's saying, but by, what we're looking at.
Yep, I understand.
He's not going to be required to find 48, he's only going to be required to find the 32.
But I already have 15, so I'm looking for an additional 17, so yes.
Thank you.
Must be the hour.
Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
Just listen to me.
It's a hot day.
That's all I have.
You're right.
Okay, any other questions for anybody? We'll call the public hearing close. Do we have any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Nobody else wants to do this, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application for a variance from Section 22-533 of the city zoning ordinance to allow a minimum parking requirement of one parking space per dwelling unit at 54 Pleasant Street, tax map 120, Lot 86. With the additional recommendations as a condition of the approval, the owner shall abide by information provided in the variance application for ZBA Case Number ZO2017-14 and testimony during the public hearing for said case. This variance is void without demonstrated long-term parking arrangements at a ratio of one space per dwelling unit. The applicant shall provide executed copies of all off-site parking agreements to the Planning and Development Department demonstrating long-term parking for the property. This var, excuse me, this variance shall be recorded in the chain of title.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
That's all right, go ahead, Ford.
Patrick's going to be our second.
Under discussion, there again, I, I'm, the uniqueness of the situation of trying to bring Claremont back, this is in the public interest. It's going to benefit the public, because we're going to be able to have maybe a little bit higher clientele to rent the apartments, because they're going to have a place to park their car. We're not going to, as Mr. Tradius said, they won't be all low-income people. It'll be, we'll have a mix at that point.
And I think it's also important to note the information that Mike gave us about his research on how much parking is used per the units in that area. So I think that is a accentuating kind of oddity of the situation as well.
Good, agree.
And it's going to help your property's surrounding values, because you're going to have more of a, we have more reach, possibility of return on, on what's there for the, the landowners, and hopefully they're at that point, put more money into the building and raise their taxes, and pay more to the general fund and all that good stuff.
And I think the condition of approval about having the off-street parking agreements for the additional spaces would help to make sure that the variance wouldn't be contrary to the public interest, so that we wouldn't be taking spots that are definitely deserved and needed.
And I guess under Section 5, Mike's criteria, Mike's census information, I think, helps with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a reasonable request.
Yep.
Do we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Best of luck.
Do we have any communications, Mike?
No.
Do we have any other business?
Should we?
Other business is the fraud forms for the city policy. We're asking all board members, we're asking all board members to sign those forms as a matter of course. If you want to take it with you, read it and bring it back, that's okay. A lot of folks have just signed it.
Do we need to discuss site plan for the other application, or are we just going to do that by email?
No, they're going to do it by email.
The site visit is going to be, we're going to do that by email.
Okay, perfect, just wanted to check.
Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by?
Patrick.
Patrick, seconded by Carolyn, all in favor. See you next month.